Oh, he's here right now. They're pointing out to me he's here right now. So I guess we'll, we'll work on this and I guess I, at least I don't have any more questions. We'll, we'll definitely be, we're looking for all the assistance we can get, make a good decision here.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. If there's anything else I can do to help, feel free to give me a call anytime. Sir, we'll be glad to help. And you know, if I, if I, do you know the structure number?
Yeah, I should.
Tell him I sent it to him.
Zero nine two four zero one three five.
And so if you, you know, if you have a picture, I can look that up.
Alright. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hey Lloyd, I got one more in my report.
Yep.
Lee is gonna give a report on the computer on the highway department and that type of thing.
Can I ask a question about bridges? That Bumpy McGee Bridge, wasn't, did that have a load limit on it at one time?
Yeah, that does have a load limit.
It does have.
Well, on that map it says legal.
It says posted for load on this.
On that one, but on that, is that the map that?
That's his road map.
This is just, that's his road map.
But on the bridge map, on Bumpy McGee's, it says twenty-two tons per single and legal.
Legal load for combination.
You see that?
Yeah, that's what's posted.
Oh, I thought it used to be posted.
Yeah, move it.
It's gotta be over here. I think, I think it's, oh, okay.
One thing though, the traffic there does kinda have an alterment of roads.
I'm just saying, I thought it used to be posted for lower. Right now it's legal, you can haul them legal loads.
You can haul them legal load, but for singles, it's, it's posted for less tons.
You got a semi truck with a trailer, then it's legal.
Alright, then you're, then you're open.
Yeah.
Well, before we move on to the computer and stuff, how do we proceed with this situation? Do I have a motion or an idea at least? How do you wanna proceed? Do we wanna hire an engineering firm besides Holloway? Or would you feel comfortable with Holloway's engineering this? How do we proceed?
Can I ask just a few questions? First of all, if you guys do the design, who checks and balances? You talked about the bridge inspector working with them to do that.
Yeah.
Right. IMAG would come in behind us and let your superintendent know that.
Basically, you'd have to do a full-fledged structural analysis of that thing. That's what he said.
Yeah, okay. It's, it's diaphragms, there's nothing structural about it. But, I mean, it's a structural component, but it doesn't have anything to do with the bridge curters. Basically, what we're doing is we're going in there pouring diaphragms instead of supporting all that eighty thousand pound load on a four-inch leg by ten inches on that. We're pouring a diaphragm in there and we're taking all that load and spreading it out.
Well, could you analyze the water flow and all this to see?
We can do that too.
If you could replace it with something?
I'd have Rose do that.
Getting back to this now, he also talked about that the engineer would also be able to determine what the load capacity would be.
I can.
All of that.
I can do that, but I don't like to do that, cause I can-
IMAG will come in behind you.
Come in behind me and then derate it again. So, I usually work with them, cause they're your inspectors, and get their blessing, and then I do my work.
And then it'll be up to Snuff.
Yep.
Right, so in other words, you have to have the inspector, you're gonna work with him and he's gonna have to prove yourself with what you've learned.
You guys gotta remember that your bridge inspector referred you to us, that's why we're here.
Okay, the next question is, so, and here's, here's where it comes in. You said earlier that that structural analysis that he would have to do is not included in that one sixty or fifty.
I can do that.
No, it is not, no, it is not. It would be a service outside of that, because that's a professional service.
Cause now I gotta pull up my rubber stamp.
In billing, yeah.
Right, I understand that, but what's the cost of that?
It depends on what you want. Do you want a load rating? I mean, what, what do you want from us?
I guess I want what Steve said we would need.
Okay, so here's how we would like to do that. We would like to work with the engineer that you already have. And then, when we do that, you don't pay us nothing. We're working with your engineer. IMAG, the one that referred, the one that, the one that told your highway superintendent the clause, we will work with him, is our preference. I would, we would prefer to just be contractors and do the construction. But if you want to hire us for engineering, we, we can and we will.
The point I'm getting at is somewhere at the end of this, there needs to be a structural analysis that's part of this whole thing that's filed somewhere, that's presented somewhere.
In, in his file and, and you know, your complete structure analysis is, is whatever. Yeah, it'll go in, it goes in your highway superintendent's file, so the inspector knows what he's looking at and what's inside.
So will the, will water-
I'm gonna give him my plan for fixing this bridge, cause it's cracked legs on the deal. I'm gonna give him that thing, and then he can take that, run it through his analyzing program, and then he'll say, yep, that'll get, get it back to legal. And if it doesn't, then you guys are back to replacing it.
Here's what I said.
It should, I've done it countless times.
But he would, he could probably again give us the structure deal that, that Deech is talking about.
Yep.
Right, yeah, the thing to go in his file, that's what we would prefer, is that it comes from IMAG, not Holloway.
Okay.
Now, when I talked to this Josh, I said, what would be the options, you know? And he said, well, you could go for big ass culverts, it's gotta, all gotta be analyzed, you know? And I ain't saying that's the way to go. And he said, just rough figures, three to four hundred thousand. A new bridge would be about a million dollars. So if these culverts, if you analyze them, and I ain't saying, I ain't no professional, but if you can get that, and get eighty percent of that paid, you'd have a new road for a hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm not sure about that three hundred thousand.
I, I, he wasn't, he said, don't hold me to this, but just comparatively, let's say.
And he talks about ice jams, or a box culvert or anything like that.
I live there and that's rages. And culverts might be fine for some places, but when them chunks of ice the size of this building come down there, they ain't going through them damn culverts. They need as much space to get through there as you could have. Yeah, well, they ain't gonna, they ain't near the size of that bridge. You make the culvert the size of what the bridge is, we're taking care of it, and I'll go along with that one, but.
Well, and I know, because we get the same ice chunks down at our place.
Yeah, I mean, there ain't no way that, I mean, you're gonna have to have a culvert that's a hundred by hundreds, you know?
Well, how far is it between the pines or pillars?
So, that's a pretty deep draw, you're gonna end up with a very long culvert there.
But I, yeah, and I ain't saying that, but I'm saying maybe somebody that does the deal, that's into it more than fixes bridges.
Alright, here, that's great. How, what would it take you to give us an estimate of what, if you would work with Holloway's and give us a, a drawing or a analysis of this thing? How soon can you give us a figure that this is gonna cost us?
I could call Doug and try and find out. So what you're asking me is, can we look at the bridge and look at what they're proposing and tell you whether we can get ahold of this?
Well, they're, we're talking about hiring them as an engineering firm, but they're not, they just so not. Why don't we get a separate engineering company to do it?
Why can't we use IMAG?
Right. IMAG can come in behind Rose and say, oh, I don't like that.
Yeah, why don't we use IMAG, because we've already got it.
Rose can do the inspection too. Or Rose can do the inspection, there's your salesman right there, hey, circle that new guy on your list.
The structural analysis has to be done before the repairs start.
Yeah, he's the one that we're, we've been working with.
Which I believe.
But he's not an engineer. But he approves what the engineer says, says. He approves or disapproves of what the engineer says.
Alright, let's hire IMAG.
I mean, he's the one we're gonna have to get by anything.
So, what, we need a motion here to hire IMAG and, and bid this, or how are we doing this?
IMAG should-
I think you already got him, Lloyd, they're already your engineer.
Was that for only bridge inspection?
Well, but professional services, part of it, because they're looking at your bridge, they're the most, gonna be the most cost-effective ones, more likely to-
So, why didn't that guy come?
I don't know, I didn't, I called him a week ago and he said he was coming.
Well, can we call him and see what he can do for us or not do for us?
Well, you can fire him and hire Rose.
Can you, can you see if you can get ahold of him, though?
Yeah.
Please?
Yeah, I'll go do it. Alright, let's keep moving on, we'll come back to this bridge thing.
Computer update, please?
Yep, everything is in except for the printer, it's not in here, but Nick McQuine has everything. The decision was, just wait till they get the printer to and come down and do the whole thing up front, so, that's where that's at. Everything's in there.
Now, is our coronavirus gonna pay for this?
It's sounding very positive. We know that we meet the standard allowance, we meet that criteria, so, we're talking roads, bridges, anything government service fits under that umbrella.
So our bridge situation, our bridge repair that would qualify right off the bat?
It's sounding very positive.
The third district told us over there, or that we should use all of those funds, offset wages. And the reason he said that, he says that's clean, it goes right back into your general fund uses, however you wish. Now, you may not have enough wages to offset what you get, I don't know what you're getting, but.
Three hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, so, you wouldn't be able to use all of it, a sizable chunk of it would just offset wages. You could, all you're doing is paperwork, you're saying this is going to wages, cause they're giving you the three ninety upfront, you don't have to spend it first, so.
Yeah, it's put on the, it's put on the bill too, and it's put on the account interest one on.
You offset it against higher wages, or anything else, and probably Rose and Bridges do qualify.
Were you on that conference call?
Did you say?
No.
Deech, were you on that conference call?
District three had a conference call on those funds, Friday.
Basically, you can use it for whatever, as long as it's-
So we'll should be checking on that, we'll have our options open as possible. We have a road grader we could use a chunk of it to. Yes, yeah. Are they still here, Wayne?
Some of them are, standing in the back, they're standing there.
Okay. Okay, the question is whether the county will continue to provide services for Elvira Township. And I, I guess that's our, we'll be open for discuss, we need a, probably need a motion to, to even have the discussion, but. But anyway, you guys wanna tell us if there any changes or what you're looking for, or anything of the kind?
We just need to renew our maintenance agreement with the county for the year that we always have. And then we need to get a bill from last year's maintenance for road work done on township roads here. We usually have that presented to us.
So, then you usually would say, okay, they graded this road, are we all gravel on our township road, or, you know, our area? And this year, we never received a bill for that.
We'll get you a bill.
I'm sure you will. So that's it, we just need to get that bill and renew our agreement with the county for maintenance.
So do I have a motion to renew the contract with Elvira Township?
I'll make a motion to renew our bill, or, our contract with Elvira Township.
I think so. You didn't recommend any changes, did you?
Same amount?
No. Well, except the hourly rate, I suppose, goes up, but I, I don't know, I don't-
Was, I've never seen it, so I don't.
Was Lloyd, was Lowell aware that he was to keep track of just about?
Well, he, he's aware, he keeps track, and I'm sure he wasn't aware that there is a bill to be submitted. The, the paperwork should be in the office, because he keeps track of all the other roads as well, it shouldn't be no big deal.
The sooner we can get that, the better, I guess, and we can get that together.
Okay, we'll get on it.
Why is Elvira treated different than any other township in the county?
Because they're incorporated.
So why are they still incorporated?
And we pay extra mill levy, we pay extra to have things done in Elvira Township.
They have to say if they wanna clear a road or if they wanna gravel a road or whatever, the county does it at the hourly rate that we've had prescribed in the records. We, we have a record of what it costs us for every road. However, like anything, it probably has been debated in the past. So, we're good to go here? Alright, all eye? Alright, motion carries.
Rose, can I interrupt for one second? So I did call Doug Westall, he's our head engineering guy, and we will not stamp a set of plans for you with, with, with. So, he said, he said he won't touch it, because, because you don't know how good or bad that wood is. So if, if IMAG wants to do it for you, but, but we're gonna step away from it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
No, he's unwilling to agree that we'll, he's, that he could change the rating. He, he's just not willing to touch it. So, if you, if you want us to do a hydrology study, we'd be happy to do that, and I will be over Tuesday with that rock crossing, but.
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Thanks, Greg.
Yep. You guys have a good day.
Okay, Lowell's still trying to get ahold of me.
Alright, let's, yeah, yeah. Okay, the next item we have here is pointing Lee Syncke as our wheat supervisor. Do we have a motion, or do we have a?
I'll second.
All eye?
Alright.
Right, Lee Syncke is our wheat supervisor. Got three thousand dollars a year. Josh? Can you get even louder? Yeah, okay, Josh. We're, yeah, we're at a commissioner meeting and we're discussing re, fixing this bridge, and we're kinda with him. I don't know whether, Rose has just told us that they will not have anything to do with the wood structure, or what, wood under, it's a cement, uh, but.
To fix that.
Wood, wood pilings holding it up. Yeah, yeah. So, we, I, I don't think we really clear how we should proceed, or if we should proceed, the land, or the people, the landowner, they'll primarily use the bridges here. He's interested in knowing if we're gonna fix it, or if we're gonna tuck the B two and three in before we can get a legal load on it. We just don't know how to proceed.
Well, the biggest question is, is, is what are his thoughts on if we repair it or fix it, can we get it to the legal?
Yeah. Yes, yes, we do. Yeah? That's very good, that's, that complicates life, because they can come fairly soon, the spring. And that would hopefully fix it for a while. And, and the other thing we've been discussing is putting a, a steel, what do you call it? Yeah? Okay, okay, now you're talking my language. What, what's this study, you would do a study? I think we're really interested in a study being done and some recommendations being done that we can back out here and not say this was a commissioner that didn't know what he was doing fixed, you know? Okay? Yeah, it's quite, there's a lot of ice possible in this situation, so we wanna, we don't wanna leave with nothing out here. Yeah, yeah. So what would this study cost us? Okay, is that just a guess to it, or is that? Okay, if I argue a lot, you'll go for fifteen? Okay, alright, I'm just trying to be conservative, I can't do. Yeah, yeah. Well, what, I'm sure, now we're having a commissioner meeting, we'll, we'll bring this up right now, I'm sure we'll do it, though.
Can you do it in two weeks?
Okay. Okay, I'll be in touch, we'll call you back. Yeah, yeah. Alright, they'll do a study for us and help us decide what we should do, try and come up with some longevity here, for twenty thousand dollars. I mean, it's better than making a great big mistake.
But Rose, I said we wanna do it.
Now, Rose will do it, because there's the wood. Rose will touch it.
They'll use the whole water.
Alright, well, pardon?
They see the water flow and all that stuff.
Hydraulic study, you know?
If they have to, they will, I don't, but he would help us determine whether we need to lean whether culverts may work or if they won't work.
So they couldn't be much, I don't know what kind of work they're gonna do.
Well.
Well, the, the, that would be covered by COVID money anyway.
Right. Twenty thousand dollars. We just don't know how, nobody's ever done it.
And he'll be able to do it within the next couple of weeks, so give it to him. I don't wanna wait.
What the hell do you do, I mean?
We can't get any guarantees, no matter what we do, without getting a study done to find out what our best options are.
For us to come in here and make a mistake and somebody gets hurt, or whatever, I think, I think we need to do due diligence with it. I don't know what Larson or anything else is gonna say, but.
So I make a motion that we do this study with IMAG, and we can base our decision on what we find after that.
All eye? Motion carried. Alright, notice of hospitalization.
There were two.
Pardon?
Yeah, already done that, yep, yep.
There were just two hospitalizations, I have them here, someone was fixing them.
Yeah.
Yeah, the nurse report looks like this, and Janice and I, we're all in, so. I would, I'm requesting that I could do the utilities, which would just be electric. I just wanna get auto needs.
Midstates and central electric.
Central electric, and I have just stuff right here, it would be the exact same thing, I would just take one check, and then I could do an auto pay. Cause sometimes, like, they'll be here two days, and then it's almost a week, or a month before I can make a payment. And so someone were starting to look like they're past due, so I would just like to do just the two utilities that we have and do it.
Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to do auto pays on central electric and midstates.
All eye? Motion carried.
Okay.
What about the, where, this was, this door thing, that was for the highway shop, right?
No, it's here, we're out here.
This door can, you cannot use this nor any longer, you can't open or shut.
Non-repair.
Really?
The center hinge is not even attached to the frame.
Well, let's do it. Do I have a motion?
Well, we got two different bids.
And, yeah, and then if we're gonna do it, do what we like to do, there's a push button that can automatically come in or out.
Well, and this makes a handicap accessible, where the building's supposed to be handicapped.
Yep.
Why's the difference in the dollar amount?
There is quite a difference in, in the two coves.
Yeah.
The only one that, the higher quoted one has a lot better hinge system, instead of three, three hangers providing the frame, they got a whole piano hinge that runs up and down the whole door. And it's structurally better built.
Ten thousand dollars?
And we're wondering if that leads to go for a couple of months.
And then another four thirty-five hundred worth of handicap.
And there are two doors that, you know, if you make that, I'll place a handicap on that one.
Yeah, that's not, and just so we know, it's not security, it's blocked, it's just stubbed block, and then the latch is a thin kind of piece, since we've been here, so.
So we're basically looking at thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Over thirteen thousand.
Yeah. Well, to make a handicap, and it's actually four doors. Well, are we gonna do this one over here too? Is it, is it, each one you're about the outside doors?
Yeah.
These don't work at all, you can't go in or out these doors, and the only one you can go in is right here, right now.
And that is in need of repair too.
Well, that one's, the water's been running in that one for some time already. But when that was brought up last time, it was, no, we don't need stairs.
Do we need two doors to handle traffic flow?
Certainly, cause a fire went right here, where we're gonna go.
Out windows.
Out, out window right here.
Well, handicap people can't bail out a window, too easy. You got one there. Yeah. Play devil's advocate.
Hundred dollar one has the whole buttons too.
Not, not two of them, just one, just for the outside door, the other one's got thirty-three hundred dollars for the inside door too.
So they're gonna replace inside doors and outside doors?
Can you read your bid, I think people are getting a little confused. What's your, read your bid.
It says, we have removed the existing e, entrance and replace all new glass aluminum storefront in a bronze and a nice finish. Doors three foot by seven foot, medium style doors with a ten inch bottom rail. It doesn't really say whether it's inside door or outside door.
They, they call it a storefront.
Well, that's just the door, not those glass. On the side for the doors, just the door.
No, 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 it's the whole storefront.
What'd you say the measurements was?
Seven foot by three foot.
Yes, but the whole, he's, you go and read it carefully, it's the whole storefront. I gave the measurements and the whole, the glass and the frame.
All glass will be one inch insulated clear E. All materials will be installed and caulked into plagues. You'll find also, we have an add to also a handicap operator.
And what it says, will remove the existent, existing entrance and replace with all new glass aluminum storefront. Dark bronze.
Storefront.
I don't know whether they're.
Well, see, in this, but this one, the, the other one says, we propose to furnish and install the following, one exterior door and framing with side lights and transom glass to fit existing opening. Aluminum to be blah, blah, blah.
So it's just the outside door on this high priced one?
No.
It's the whole storefront.
It's the whole, uh, hardware to include contiguous hinge, ramp panic and handicap operator for exterior door. Cocking of exterior and inter, interior project, tear out and disposal of existing related materials.
So they just tear the interior one up?
So that one has the handicap included, the other one doesn't?
No, the handicap's under thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Plus the nine thousand, ten thousand, basically.
Yeah, it's about, well, it's over thirteen thousand.
It says one exterior thirty-seventy door with framing.
The one from interstate doesn't, to me, read like it's doing the glass, just the doors, when you read it.
All, both quotes are for a whole storefront. Because I, I sent him pictures on the phone and I told him the measurements. It's eighty inches wide and a hundred and four inches tall. And he said that it would be a three foot door, like they said in the code. And the handicap remote would be.
Oh, it says add twenty-six fifty.
Right, on the cheaper bid.
On the cheaper bid, so it's five thousand, and then you're gonna add another twenty-six hundred for the handicap for, uh, remote.
Right.
So that's gonna be seven.
Well, not quite seventy.
About eight thousand.
What about the inside door?
No, no.
Yeah.
Okay, seventy-two hundred.
That's for that door.
We're just.
Or this door, excuse me.
This door here, this door here.
But then, if you wanted handicap, the second door, we'd have to have something to push the button to open it.
Then it would be another twenty-six fifty on the.
For the second door?
Uh, for the second door, yes. Because this door over here, this metal hinge, the frame was actually gone, where the hinge, where the hinge is supposed to be fastened.
It says not included in the proposal, water testing, final cleaning, work or parts not listed. Yeah, well, how many parts do they not have?
Well, I think they're talking anything extra, that must they get into it that they might need.
I would say though, one thing, that independent Viking glass is a pretty good outfit. I would think they'd know what they're doing. I don't know this other one at all.
I've heard their ads on the radio. It's about it.
Remote permission, well. What do you wanna do?
Places, there were not any, we looked like here on, and should we had, somebody looked at that, and there was not one in here, correct?
Nope, there wasn't one in there.
So what was your take on it Lowell, when you're researching it out there?
Well, like I say, they're gonna have to put a whole new storefront, and if you're looking at eight thousand against what, thirteen, the.
You feel the Viking glass had everything.
Yes.
And that was really nice of him to come over, I did ask him to come over and do the measurements and everything else.
That's why he was over, is because he was asked.
I was, I asked Lowell to come over.
Wouldn't he do it for you?
I suppose.
Twenty, ain't it?
No, damn.
Keep up Lloyd. Well, one is thirteen thousand and the other one looks.
It says seventy-two hundred.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I don't know enough about it, should make a.
Well, yeah, yeah, but if we didn't get a frame though.
Now, the seventy-two is for one door, or two doors?
One.
One.
One, one side, yes, and the other one is thirteen thousand for the same one.
But there's difference in the hinges.
No, no, it's ninety, ten thousand dollars for the same thing as they got for, what, forty-six hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm, what we're talking is making, then if you add the, um, handicap operator.
Right, then you're up to seventy-two hundred.
Then you're up to seventy-two hundred, or the thirteen thousand.
Yeah. The seventy-two hundred gets you a storefront and a handicap, nothing for the inside door. The thirteen thou, fourteen thousand, or whatever it is, gets you a handicap for both doors.
Well, there's no point in having a handicap on one door.
Right. Okay.
I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary to have the handicap, but if you're gonna have a handicap on one, it's ridiculous unless you have it on the both.
Should we look at what the requirements are?
Isn't our building supposed to be handicap accessible?
But, but I, are you talking about handicap on that door and handicap on that door?
The inner and outer.
Just on this door.
I don't think you need both.
No, but, but you do have, if you're gonna have one. Open the first door, then they just sit in that, in between the two doors.
What do you wanna do here?
I make a motion to accept the, the bids on independent Viking glass.
Do I have a second?
With the handicap.
For both doors?
Both doors.
Okay, so Viking glass, that's.
That's second, yeah, I'll go with you, yeah, I'll second.
All I?
All right.
Motion carries. All right.
Yeah.
So the next one we have on here is that employee salary. I did not put employee salaries in the newspaper when I should have, that's, I wanted to check that, I knew you guys had said something, but I'll, but also what we do have now in with the newspaper. So just enough, that's kinda what that one was about.
Okay.
Well, let's go into the burn ban, because we'll probably have to go into executive anyway.
Uh, I, I, before we got in the snow, I thought we needed a burn ban. That's why I had it on. I texted Derek yesterday and asked his opinion, he doesn't think we need it, we're looking to get more snow this weekend, so we're not gonna worry about it, okay?
Thank you.
But I didn't know how else to do it, because going into having that, I needed it on there because.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree.
It was.
Yeah, when after the snow, I think four people called me to let me know they're burning, so.
Okay, well, I just, like I said, I didn't wanna do anything, I wanted to ask your opinion before I did, you know?
Okay, we have executive session here.
I don't have, I don't, I don't, I don't trust you guys.
First of all, cheers.
Hi, thank you guys all, have a week.
Oh, first, do we have a public input here?
Uh, here's the.
I just have a couple, I have a couple easy questions.
All right.
Hopefully, um, so we got two more full-time highway employees?
One part-time and one full-time.
Okay, and everybody's got their CDL?
He's, in his process of getting a CDL.
He's passed the written test.
He's passed the written test, he's gotta pass his driving test yet.
Okay, when's he gonna do that?
Shortly here.
The whole family's got influenza, like, uh.
Pardon?
The whole family's out with influenza.
That's fine, that's. That was my only two questions, I guess.
Is he using the county truck to do his exam?
No.
They're supposed to test with what they're gonna drive it though.
He's, he used the county truck to practice.
Well, you gotta use a truck to go get your exam done.
Yes, but we're not gonna be using our county truck to do that.
Okay.
Hey Lord? How we doing on nine-one-one, county, or, Don, yeah?
They were, I got to talk to him a couple, when I asked him the question, I haven't heard back from him yet. But I do know that that litigation part, oh, it's a, PD disaster, whatever it is, is in the process of being updated. So that'll really help speed that along too, the best part of nine-one-one. I mean, we get together, can't remember when, it was supposed to be April something, it's in April.
Okay, and my next subject is, what is the attitude of this commission on a, on employees handbook?
Been trying to get one for twenty years.
How about employee evaluation too, for you?
Uh, it'd be nice to.
Highway department and so on.
Answer?
Normal, normal people usually do evaluations and then think of raises, those guys get hit with raises and then they wonder why.
Anybody have an answer to my question on the? Handbook?
I guess we looked at, I really don't, you know, we've got the, county are that big, when we've got, I, I'm not opposed to it. Back to employees, just.
Well, you know, we've almost completely overturned the employees in this county, in the last year. And if we're gonna keep doing the things the way we've always done, these people don't know what that is. So we need to have a current handbook.
Well, the, the, the thing is, it, it affects our superintendent and our director of equalization, because the rest are elected officials.
And.
And highway employees.
Highway employees, yeah.
That's another thing, you said in your minutes that after he got his CDL, he would be employed, but he's been employed now, Mr. Elton's over three weeks without his CDL.
He passed his CDL.
That's not a CDL, that's a permit.
And also.
Because if he drives, he has to have someone else in that vehicle with him who has a CDL, so it means you've got two people driving one truck.
That handbook covers sexual harassment and a few other things that affect the elected officials.
I, I know that the, you know, before I came on, they looked at some, but that's as far as.
Well, you need to look at it again.
I just, I got a question on the CDL, how did he get a CDL after February seventh?
He did it before.
He tested it before.
He did it before.
He did it written, yes.
He did it on the Friday before.
I'd say he did it, and a county. You're gonna have to look towards the future on what you intend to do about that.
Yeah.
From now on, it's gonna cost you about three to five thousand dollars to get something with a CDL.
It's a rural county, looking in to see if their, their highway people can do the training.
They're gonna train their own there, but they've got the personnel and equipment to do it.
Yeah.
They're gonna keep it their own.
In-house, yeah.
And Lowell, your road report, or your road priority, is that your plan for what roads you're gonna take care of this year, like for, what roads are gonna get gravelled, or what is, what is your?
Just grading.
That's just your grading?
Just my grading.
Did you go through and decide what, which roads had highest priority for appear, or that kinda thing?
This.
I mean, there, quite a few of them have got some gravel, but there's quite a few that still need some gravel. Do you have a priority for those?
This was the map that Susan had, the priority map?
That's an old one, I don't, I got that from the courthouse.
Well, I don't mean, uh, number one priority, number two priority, number three priority, or low maintenance, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about what roads are gonna get attention, like say for an example, graveling. Or rebuilding, pulling the shoulders, like what Rex did last year. What, what, do you have any plans like that for this year?
Uh, not written, not, not written down, no.
Are you going to have?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's move on.
I need approval from the vouch.
We need approval for the vouch.
I'll approve the vouchers, one second.
All I? Need a motion to adjourn. All I? Motion carries, where it's here.